Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the December 11, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. We're starting a few minutes late here because there's potential for black ice on the road. I want to make sure everybody safely gets to work. But the board's all here, and it's time to party. So we have Pastor Matt Petty from the Burne Hickory Baptist Church to lead us in the opening prayer. Good seeing you again, Pastor. And then Deputy Mark Hampton to lead us in the place of leading. So those who are willing and able, please stand.
Let's pray together. Lord, we thank you this morning for the safety. We thank you for this county. We thank you for how much it does care for the people in it. Thank you for this board and this time, and we thank you for this season, Lord. Be with us today as decisions are made. Be with the officials as they represent all of the people of this county. And thank you, Lord Jesus, for all that you do for us. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Good morning. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Deputy? Okay, we have a presentation this morning, and I'll let Commissioner Weatherford do the honors.
Thank you. It's great to have a presentation today for such a fine organization. And let me tell you just a little bit about it, and then invite members up here. But this is the 15th Annual Safe Kids Cobb County and Safety Village Foundation fundraiser. And they're here to present a check to us. And I know we have many people here. We have Lisa Crossman and Sam Heaton, who are the chairs, come on up. Jeff and Cecilia Tellis, we're big involved. Al Martin, who's the chair. Lisa Grissom with Safe Kids. And I didn't invite you, Chief Crowder. Oh. And Allison Carter. The 15th year, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Why don't you tell us a little bit about it, and then I'll hand you the check to hand it back.
Sure.
All right. So this is our 15th annual golf tournament that we put on for public safety. It started, I can't remember if it was the director at the time, but it started with just a small amount of money. And this year, really, the co-chair here challenged us all, the committee, that we're going to reach over $100,000 this year. Yeah, that's what we all said. So, no, it wasn't that clean.
Who gave the $4?
So I will tell you that this group right here worked so hard to put this tournament on. It truly is, for the golfers, it's the best tournament you'll ever experience. And people keep coming back. As a matter of fact, they call us now to ask when the tournament is coming up the next year. So with that, I want to say thank you to each one of these folks for the work that they did, that took some others as well. But this was a key group that met regularly. Our silent auction group also just does a tremendous job of, how many gifts were out there this year? Over 200 gifts were available.
And they're good ones, too.
Yeah, they're good ones. So with that, I couldn't do it without them and my co-chair here, who always hits them in the back of the head and says, hey, let's get it going. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa Crossman for more comment.
Best class ever. I'm Lisa Crossman. I'm deputy director for Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and I'm honored to co-chair this tournament with Sam. We both keep pushing the committee and pushing forward. But I will tell you that of any group I've ever worked with, this is the dream team of the committee, of any committee. This is a group of people who you could have one meeting and say, go, and they take care of it, and every year have raised the bar. We also couldn't do this event without the support of our sponsors. And so this year, we've had some, every year, we've had great sponsors, but we really had some folks step up this year to help us reach that, what felt like an unrealistic goal at times. But Motorola, the Braves Foundation, and Glock were our primary sponsors, and we really thank them tremendously for their support. And then Metro Atlanta Ambulance and Wellstar Health System also stepped up in a big way to support the event. We have numerous other sponsors who support the teams and the silent auction and the event, the meals for the event. And so because of that sponsorship, that's how we're able to raise these funds that Safe Kids and the Safety Village can use throughout the year to provide injury prevention support to our families in Cobb County. So I want to stop there and let Lisa and Allison just tell you a little bit about Safe Kids and the Safety Village.
Thank you, Lisa. We have a lot of Lisas on this committee. So I am the coordinator for, one of the coordinators for Safe Kids through Wellstar Health System. Melissa Chan Leiba is also my cohort in crime, if you want to call it that, for Safe Kids in Cobb County. And this money is our operating budget, basically. So what we do with that money is we go out into the community to provide injury prevention programming. Last year, we saw over 25,000 individuals and educated them on different safety initiatives. One of our biggest programs, if you don't know, is our Child Passenger Safety Program, where you can come and have a personal appointment with one of our technicians to have your car seats checked. And we check somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000 car seats a year to make sure that they're safe and make sure that the kids and the parents in our community are safer and know those messages. But we are housed at the Safety Village, and so we team up with Allison to do lots of programming, but we are lucky to be under that same roof. So come see us. But I'm going to let Allison tell you a little bit about that.
All right. Well, thank you. Again, it's a great committee to work on and a great cause. And truly, the Safety Village Foundation and our board members that are here today, it's a great partnership. I mean, the Safety Village and Safe Kids, our whole mission is to prevent preventable injuries. And so the Safety Village, we focus on kindergarten or second and fourth grade students in Cobb County. So we go out to every kindergarten classroom, do stop, drop, and roll, and friendly firefighter with our fire educators. And then all of our second and fourth graders through Cobb County come to the Safety Village, and they will learn everything from fire and life prevention to pedestrian safety to electrical safety, health messages, CPR. There's just a number of things that they learn as they all attend. So we have about 24,000 students that come through during the school season. And then in the summers, we educate our adult senior population, scout programs, and various other things. So it is just a great partnership that we have Safe Kids right here at the Safety Village. And everybody gets confused when they say, "Safety Village, we come and get our car seats." No, it's really Safe Kids, but it is a great partnership, and we're happy. It's safe all around, so we're happy to be a part of it. So anyway, thank you.
We also use this golf tournament to thank our public safety folks for what they do every day. And just personally, I want to say thank you because I know that all of our public safety and EMS and fire were on point, just in case we had inclement weather today to be able to take care of everybody. But truly, you know, this is a one-day event with our golf tournament, but we hold our public safety, EMS, 911, fire, police folks all up in the light and say thank you for what they do every day to help us stay safe, not just the children in our community, but our entire families. And so one of the things we like to do with this event is to say thank you to them. And many of our corporate sponsors who will host teams will invite some of our public safety folks to play golf with them on their day off. And so it's nice to have that support as well. Okay?
So with that, for the, to the Safety Village and Safe Kids Cobb County, we'll present this check for $100,004.
That's the one who gave the $4.
I threw that in just to make sure we had over $100,000.
It is truly one of the best events I've ever attended. And not only is it a lot of fun, the auction has got some of the best stuff there you ever, I bought more things I didn't know I needed at that auction. So make sure you visit next year.
All right. For consent, yesterday during executive session, we discussed a settlement. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm glad you're all here.
There are no speakers.
No, I didn't. You got me. You can see now that it takes four of them to keep me in line here. And I truly appreciate all they do to keep this big train moving real fast. So with that, yesterday during executive session, the board discussed a settlement of a workers' compensation claim. So I'd like now to make a motion to add a non-agenda item to the end of the consent tab to authorize a settlement, workers' compensation claim, on behalf of Christopher Peace. Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. And it pacifies five to zero. And then secondly, after agenda prep yesterday, some information came to light where I believe it's better to pull the first item on court administration and move that to regular for discussion. So the one on to authorize a state court, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's already in, it's already in regular. It was already been moved there. Okay, so there we are. Why didn't you say that to me? It takes six people to keep me in line. So anyway, so we'll scroll down the tab so everybody can see the consent agenda, which Okay, we've read, that's all been read on the screen now. So now I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised and authorize the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, now we're going to go to regular. And the first one is the Supreme, make an amendment, authorize amendment of unemployment policy. For that, Bill, is Bill Walkman here? Yeah, Commissioner Rott would like to ask some questions here.
Yeah, I think he said that Tony's going to come up instead.
Regardless.
Whatever. Yes, sir. I know Bill knows because I asked him, but you know, I had some questions about switching from a state employee to a Cobb employee, and I realized that if she just retired, that the county would incur the expense because they would have to hire someone to take her place. But then what we talked about was the state supplement, and I know Bill looked into that. So if you guys could just talk a little bit about how that works and why there's not a lot of concern that it would go away, which would increase the county's costs.
The state reimburses the county for the salary and a portion of the salary and the FICA for the Superior Court judge's assistance. We've been receiving that. I've been here for more than 25 years. We've been receiving that for 25 years, that we get that. With the change for this employee to come back to the county, we would begin receiving a reimbursement based on her years of service, serving in that capacity. It is a scale based on service. And so I understand that's been confirmed with the state that we would get that reimbursement, and we would receive that beginning the first of the year.
Sure. Commissioner Burrell.
And also, Tony, since she's retiring from the state, we're still getting the same amount in the pool from the state for all the administrative assistance.
We, yes, we would, it would be able to change with all the other ones. It's based on a scale of their experience so that we get a certain amount for their salary.
Right.
Yes.
So, and she will be getting her health benefits, insurance through the retirement from the state, not the county.
That's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I support this.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I make a motion to authorize an amendment to the employment policy for the job classification of judicial administrative specialists in juvenile court, juvenile state and superior courts, and adopt this new employment policy for the job classification of judicial administrative specialists in juvenile state and superior court. Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. And your honor, you can take the towel away now.
Thank you.
Help him, Tom. He's looking rather faint here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks for the hard work. Okay, good morning, Ms. Parish.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Then this morning, the Transportation Office has four items that we would like to present for consideration. And the first item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving and Company Incorporated, and an amount not to exceed $1,344,838.30 for intersection improvements on Blackville Road at Autumn Ridge Parkway.
I'll give this one to Commissioner Burrell.
Yes, thanks, Erica. And as we discussed yesterday, we will have a meeting with the two subdivisions that are, so will be impacted by this.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve.
Have a second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our second item is to request that the Board of Commissioners authorize the acceptance of the assignment of project number D-7280, task order number one, to the 2012 Master Task Order Contract with the LPA Group, Inc., to Michael Baker International, Incorporated. Approve an amendment to the assigned task order to the 2012 Master Task Order Contract for transportation planning and environmental services, and authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
A second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number one to the project number D-7280, task order number one, to the 2012 Master Task Order Contract with Michael Baker International, formerly known as the LPA Group, in an amount not to exceed $17,890 for environmental services for Big Shanty Road sidewalks.
Commissioner Burrell.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question. Pacify to zero.
And our last item for consideration this morning is to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,750,000 to develop the Cobb County 2050 Conference of Transportation Plan, CTP, State PI number 0014983, Cobb County Project Number X2519, and approve change order number one to the consultant services agreement in the net deductive amount of $500,000 for reduction in the scope of services required at this time, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of highlight to the board and anybody watching, this item was revised at my request because a lot of times in the funding, you don't really see that previously the board had agreed or approved an agreement, say with ARC or the CID. The board normally sees is the preliminary estimate, and it doesn't really show that there's not a million dollars being spent by the county. Indeed, that million dollars is coming from the ARC. And so the revisions in this basically point out the fact that there is only a $250,000 expense for the county, and the million dollars is coming from the ARC. So motion to approve.
Have a second. And I appreciate that revision, too, Commissioner Rott. That meant bigger helping.
Yeah, we discussed it at length yesterday.
So that was a good catch. And thank you for, you know, administrative correction in a short timeframe, Erica.
Yes, sir.
So with that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, on to Parks now.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our item this morning is for the board to approve change order number one with Morland Altobelli and Associates. One of the Tier One projects in the 2016 Parks SLOSS program is a joint project to construct a recreation center with the city of Kennesaw. When initial allocations were made in our financial system, it had not been determined whether Cobb County would provide program management services for the project or if the city would provide them. Kennesaw has since decided they would prefer to provide these services, so there will not be a need for Morland Altobelli and Associates, who is the county's program management contractor to provide these services. Approval of this agenda item reduces their contract and places the funds back in the project budget, which will be conveyed to the city in a future agenda item. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve deductive change order number one for $414,000 to the program management contract with Morland Altobelli and Associates under the 2016 Parks SLOSS program.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you. Motion approved as presented.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question. Pacify to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Jimmy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I have three items this morning. The first item is a joint item with Parks, is a request for the BOC to authorize the purchase of endpoint devices and the associated hardware and software to implement a work order management system for Parks. In 2011, the Citizen Oversight Committee recommended that the Parks Department implement an online work order management system. Funding for the technology was included in the 2016 SLOSS. In September of 2017, the board authorized funding and professional services from the Cartograph Systems, Incorporated, to expand and configure the order management system to include Parks. The request today is to purchase the endpoint devices, associated hardware and software to be used in the field to fully implement OMS for Parks at a cost of $109,226.47. Funding is available in the 2016 Parks SLOSS Fund. The Cartograph OMS and the associated hardware will provide the means for Parks to more efficiently respond to issues in our parks and facilities. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of endpoint devices, associated software and hardware, in an amount not to exceed $109,226.47 for an operations work order management system for Parks. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
You don't want to do this one, too? Okay. My second item this morning is a request to upgrade the county's time and attendance system. The county currently uses Kronos as its time and attendance system. The current hardware has reached end of support, and the software version is outdated, causing compatibility issues with other county applications. Hardware and software and services for this project are available to purchase from a U.S. Communities contract with Kronos, Incorporated. The estimated cost of the project is $284,325, which includes software upgrades, implementation services, training, and a hardware refresh. Technology improvements is an eligible project program under the 2016 SLOSS. The time and attendance systems upgrade is an approved project of the Support Services Technology Improvements Work Program. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of hardware, software, and services to upgrade the county's time and attendance system in an amount not to exceed $284,325 under provisions of U.S. Communities Contract 14-JLR-003 with Kronos, Incorporated. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the purchasing director to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
Motion to approve.
Question? Call a question.
Thank you.
Pacify to zero.
Our third and final item this morning is a joint item with property management, water, and the tax commissioner. On February 14, 2017, the board authorized an RFQ to prequalify vendors capable of providing design, installation, and maintenance services for the county's enterprise video surveillance and access control system. In November of 2018, the board approved master agreements with three prequalified firms, Controlled Access Incorporated, Convergent Technologies, and One Path. The three prequalified vendors were asked to submit quotes for replacement of the access control system at Waters for Water Reclamation Facilities and all lift pump stations, as well as the Field Operations Center, Central Maintenance Center, Customer Service Building, and Water Quality Lab. Controlled Access Incorporated was the lowest-priced responsive bidder. The cost, including a 10% contingency fund, is $141,075. In a separate project, Controlled Access was the low bidder for installation of the county's enterprise video surveillance and control system throughout the tax commissioner facilities. The South Cobb Motor Vehicle Office was not included at the time. The tax commissioner has requested the current system at the Cobb County Motor Vehicle, Cobb, at the South Cobb Motor Vehicle Office be replaced with the enterprise solution to improve security. Selection of Controlled Access will maintain consistency and compatibility with the tax commissioner facilities. The cost, including a 10% contingency fund, is $34,815. The installation of the enterprise access control and surveillance system is an eligible capital project under the 2016 SLOSS. Facilities improvement is an approved project of the Support Services Facilities Improvement Work Program, which provides for the modernization of life safety systems of the county facilities to ensure employee and public safety, as well as protection of physical assets. Funds for these projects are available in the 2016 SLOSS Support Services Facilities Improvements Programs Fund. We request the Board of Commissioners approve two project agreements with Controlled Access Incorporated in amounts not to exceed $141,075 for the installation of the county's enterprise access control system at water facilities, and $34,815 for the installation of the county's enterprise access control and surveillance system at the South Cobb Motor Vehicle Office. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
And I forgot to ask this yesterday. And Lisa, you might know the answer. I thought the South Cobb tag office closed. Which thing closed?
No, it's still operating.
Drop.
Yes.
Oh, South Cobb dropped. Okay.
Correct.
I appreciate that clarification because we even had inquiries from residents, and it's the South Cobb tribe office.
Okay, all right. Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion? Call a question.
Thank you.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Property Management and Hiddle Scott?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have one item, is to authorize transfer funds from Superior Court's Alternative Dispute Resolution to the 2016 SLOSS magistrate court renovation. The interior renovation is an eligible capital improvement project under the 2016 SLOSS. The Board of Commissioners authorize an inter-fund transfer in the amount of $105,000 from the Superior Court's ADR unit reserves to the 2016 SLOSS Fund for the completion of the magistrate court renovation project already in process. Authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Rott.
I sure hope this gets done quick. You're going to run out of places to get money from. It seems like every...
This trial will finish up January 5. Yes, sir.
All right. Good. Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call a question. Pacify to zero. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Community Development and Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development, here to present agenda item to approve a revision to a recently adopted policy by the Board of Commissioners as it relates to... of Commissioners as it relates to a public involvement process for authorities that seek multifamily note bonds from the Board of Commissioners. The Board recently adopted some guidelines on some public involvement processes, and after that was approved, we kind of looked at it a little more with our legal team, and we are making some recommendations for some minor tweaks to the overall policy. The overall policy will still stay intact, where we're still proposing all of our procedures as it relates to the public involvement, but we are expanding it to other authorities, and we are also expanding it so that all types of multifamily notes, not just multifamily notes for new construction, would be covered by the policy. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask the Board to please consider approving the revision to the multifamily note policy.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, we discussed this a lot yesterday, too. And I think the revisions are very good, and it'll bring public meetings and openness to the process. So, motion to approve.
Second, in discussion, Commissioner Cupid, sure.
Just an inquiry and follow-up to discussion yesterday, there was some inquiry from Cobb Housing Authority regarding our changes. Have we resolved that?
I know Ms. Blair with Dever's team has discussed the item. Mr. Hosack, you gonna cover that, sir?
Yes, Commissioner, there was, I think, an inquiry that came from legal counsel representing Cobb Housing Authority. I believe that the concerns that were expressed could be addressed after the passage of this revision to the policy. I spoke personally with Marietta Housing Authority's Executive Director, Mr. Pete Waldrop, and he, oh, hey, Pete. Pete's committed to continuing the discussions that Mr. Cochran, the Cobb Housing Authority's attorney, had asked to address. So, I believe that we can, I would recommend that we move forward with the policy, knowing that the executive director from MHA is committed to working with the Cobb Housing Authority on some concerns that they would like to explore.
And I also saw that letter, and the first question I had is, had you called the county attorney? They had not. So, maybe you might want to call the county attorney and, you know, address your concerns to them, because I'm not a lawyer. I mean, I know you are, you probably could do it better than I can. But bottom line here is that both have the power to move forward on addressing a very critical issue in this county, which is both workforce and affordable housing.
Okay.
And I believe that the, I've had extensive discussions with the Cobb side of the house, and they pretty, we have been working on ways to empower them to continue to work with that. So, I can assure you that with Michael Murphy and the other team, their issues, we'll address them, and we're all gonna work together to find a way to at least ameliorate some of the concerns about this very critical issue.
Okay, and that can be done outside of this framework?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. All right, and thank you for modifying it to broaden the notes that will be considered or the types of activity that will be included in this policy.
We're happy to assist, Commissioner.
And I appreciate you bringing that forward, too, Commissioner. I realize that this is a concern of yours, but also it broadens the opportunity for the public to get involved in this, and we don't get complacent about how we do things. So, the more we can engage the public, the better product we have once it comes out. So, that, I'll call a question. Pass is five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ross, all yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. It's great to be up here this morning. This is an agenda item request, the creation of a new position, Communication Specialist Senior in our departments in brief history. Prior to the recession, the Communications Department had 12 full-time staff and several part-timers. We now have eight full-time staff. Three of those positions went up to IS. One of them was defunded, a video producer position. This is part of our restoration budget request, seeking that one position that was defunded back into the department. Besides the usual items we have in communication that the public sees, answering media inquiries, putting out public statements on social media and by press releases, we've been, we've had a very stressful year. We run the county switchboard, we take 53,000 calls a year down there. We also manage the cable franchise agreement. That brings in 8.5 million for the county, but we have to handle consumer complaints, and that's been between 300 and 400 a year. Our public relations folks have been increasingly burdened with running promotions, publicity, printing, proclamations, and photography services for all sorts of county departments, including the newsletters, increasing the website content on our new website, and dealing with new social media channels. This year, that we boosted our, besides Twitter and Facebook, our presence on Instagram and Nextdoor as well. It's been very successful in getting out to the residents of Cobb County. Our TV folks, that are only three in that department, soon to be two, hopefully temporarily, we do 83 live meetings a year, including this one. We manage our 24-hour streaming cable channel. This year, we did two dozen off-hour events that includes debates, forums, town halls, and live events like the MLK Junior and the Memorial Day Parade, as well as supporting our regular programs and our partner agencies in the county. So, we've been really treading water. This would go a long way to helping restore what we had before the recession. Just for some perspective, our department is less than half the size of some of our metro contemporaries, essentially doing the same thing. So, we respectfully ask for this position, Communication Specialist, to be created.
Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, thanks, Ross. That was a very good explanation, and we do understand how critical this is and how short-staffed you are. What I'd like to do is recommend or make a motion that we approve this position now, but incorporate it into the fund balance list that we discussed yesterday at the retreat, and I guess make it a priority or approval at that time.
That sounds good.
And that would be my motion.
I'll second it. I think, Ross, that you might need to start charging the chairman for his weekly videos and all the time you do with him. Maybe that's how we can pay for it.
Well, you have...
And also, when...
Commissioner Ott's got one for years. I would charge him double.
No, I had to stop mine because they didn't have time, because the chairman was taking up all the time.
Okay.
And all three of your followers are devastated.
I'm gonna sit here and take this so we can get a positive vote out of it. Anybody else want to pile on? Commissioner Cupid.
Commissioner, was it intended that we would use fund balance initially?
It is on the list, along with other positions for communications and other departments. But if we approve it now, it'll just move to when we allocate fund balance positions, correct?
Right. I'm okay with approving the position. I'm not sure that, I mean, whether regardless of whether you use fund balance and put it on the list, it's still gonna have to be incorporated into the budget, so I'm not really sure what we're accomplishing by putting it on the fund balance list.
I think the issue was is that if you did it for one, you had to do it for everybody. So, because we had the fund balance discussion yesterday, we can roll that into the overall fund balance discussion, because if Ross, next week, we can have, as we saw from the list of people yesterday, you can come back and ask for those positions to be approved also. But I think the bigger issue here is that the use of fund balance in a unique isolated instance here sets a precedent for using fund balance for other positions.
Right, I understand that, but at the same time, there has been a lot of discussion that the Board in the past has approved things without saying how they're gonna pay for it.
Right.
Well, then, in essence, that's what you're doing. If you're saying, "We're gonna approve the position, but, oh, by the way, we're just gonna put it on the list," which you don't know for sure that it's gonna pass muster on the list.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna approve it today, then you should say that you're gonna use the fund balance and don't, it's almost like saying, "Well, we're gonna approve it, we're gonna wait and see if we're gonna pay for it."
I gather that we're using fund balance and that this is not the first time that the Board has approved positions this year, but I think the conversation up here just reflects the tenuous nature of our funding for all the departments to be able to restore their staffing to pre-recession levels and our ability to keep up with that goal. I think we all recognize the need, I do, but, you know, in reflection of Commissioner Ott's statements, this is not necessarily best practice, and that this has to accompany a commitment from the Board, which is changing also, to fund that position next year. In light of what we all see that you're doing every day, I'm in support, and I think many of us here are in support.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Yeah, I'm definitely in support. I think if something's needed, you probably need several more.
Yeah.
I think that this is a good use of any fund balance to get us through and that puts you on the path for the next few years for the chairman's restorative budget that was passed, certainly by the majority of us, and I think it was simply, this would go in line for funding in your budget quest next year. So, I'm in support.
Okay, I just wanna, I wanna help out Commissioner Burrow here, because my concern has been budget discipline, and I'm very concerned about setting an example, a precedent by doing, you know, by funding something out of fund balance at this time. But again, whatever the middle road here is, is if the Board chooses that they would like now to go ahead and use fund balance, I'm not gonna sit here and fight that, because the priority is, is that Ross has made a very strong argument why we should do that. So, I think the fact that my comments explain that even though I would approve something like this, I would hope that it wouldn't open up the floodgates. That's the concern that I have, that, you know, starting in January, every department would come back here and then, what argument would I have? That we funded one, why not us?
It stands on its own.
They do, but they all stand on their own, and as you look at the list, I think every commissioner here, based on what you saw during your budget process, Commissioner Ott had some good comments yesterday about he has a shortfall in public safety in his precinct. We all feel the budget pressure here, and I think the best way to approach this pressure is to have a process where we methodically approach the issue and then find a way to fund it based on our priorities. So, again, we have this kind of discussion, and I think it reflects how careful we are about spending the money, but I was the one that thought that the way to come up with a compromise is that we fund, we propose to approve the position, knowing that we're gonna be dealing with fund balance right away. We've heard all the discussions here today and yesterday and throughout the weeks with Ross, that I'm fairly confident, I can't guarantee it, of course, because we need three votes, but I'm fairly confident that when it comes time to fund, to address fund balance issues next month, if not sooner, this will be one that we will fund. That's, it's an opinion, but it's one that I'm fairly confident about, because I already hear, commit right here, let's go ahead and fund it right now, but...
Ms. Chairman, what if, to not get into the fund balance discussion, what if, because we're only talking roughly half a year, right?
Yeah.
What if, instead of using fund balance, that use undesigned contingency? And, well...
No, we can do, it's there, you're right.
Well, no, I'm just saying, use that, and then that gets you, I mean, the reality is, though, I mean, if you want to use fund balance, you and the county manager set what's on the agenda. This came in, obviously, before the retreat yesterday, so that's why we're hearing it, but, I mean, when you say that you're concerned about other agencies and departments coming in, they're not gonna come in if you and the county manager don't allow it on the agenda. I just think that if we're gonna approve something today, we need to say how it's gonna be paid for today.
Sure, right.
And not say, "Well, we're gonna wait." So, you know, how you pay for it, I don't care, I just think we need to pay for it today.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, with that, I think we should be very clear that undesigned contingency is it set aside for something else at this time?
No, ma'am. It would be for issues that arise similar to this. I would add, just for the Board to be comfortable, a couple of the things that we have talked about, the deputy county manager, Ross, myself, and Bill, we anticipate some shifts in how the communications budget will move forward in the future. There may be kind of a shift in some of the operational costs that might go to personnel costs to help soften the blow once we get through year one of the fund balance. The fund balance appropriation initially was just to get us through year one until the new 2020 budget could be considered by the Board. A very good point by Commissioner Ott, but we do feel like that's a way to move forward.
You lost four positions to IS last year, and then they were unfunded, so they're not in your budget this year. But on the agenda item, it does say that the funds are available in the adopted '19 budget. So, regardless of where the money is funded for this year, half of this year budget, we still have to sustain it in the '20 budget. So, whether you take it out of contingency or fund balance or reserves or wherever, it's gotta be in the budget for next year. So, if we're approving it now, we've still gotta sustain it in 2020.
Right, and as the county manager said, I think we're working toward that right now.
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Burrow. I mean, regardless of what pocket it comes from, this is still one-time monies that have to be sustained in the future, and I would, I echo your sentiment, Chairman, that although this is well justified, this does essentially open up consideration for everyone else, because when every department has come before us, they've been able to show how they're doing much more with less and how they're doing much more with less compared to their counterparts in other areas, and this is something that we continue to grapple with. So, I don't have any issue supporting this, but this is part of a larger, a larger matter before the Board.
Well, I want to depend on the county manager here to stem the tide, because, look, it's not perfect, there are emergent requirements that come out. Clearly, we've all seen, to be quite clear about this, is that my concern yesterday was is that whenever we go to event, there's Ross filming the event. Well, he's a department head, and he's doing what it takes to get the job done, but when does he have time to think big thoughts? And that has an impact on the county. So, as much as I would like to have a perfect process, I also recognize that things come up during, during, during the year, and the good news is that we can fund this one, and you also have made it very clear to me that it better be in the 2020 budget. I hear you loud and clear, because otherwise, why are we doing all this if I'm not gonna put it in the budget for 2020?
And Chairman and Board hear the direction loud and clear about being judicious about what positions move forward outside of our normal budgeting process.
And one other suggestion, Ross, when David leaves, hire a replacement so that it doesn't get unfunded and you still keep that position.
Already in works.
Okay, good.
All right.
Okay, so do I need to revise my motion or just make a motion to approve? And then we can decide where it's coming from?
I support that, because as you stated before, that the agenda item does provide the funds are available within FY 2019 funds.
Okay, so I'm gonna revise my motion, and this is okay with, did you second? You second? To approve Communication Specialist Senior position in the Communication Department and the chairman to authorize the funding.
You have a second, Ms. Scherrath?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Commissioners. Merry Christmas.
Next.
All right. No further public comment. So, Commissioner Burrow, I believe you have a reappointment to recommend to the Board?
I would like to recommend approval for the reappointment of Jack Demarest to the Board of Tax Assessors. He has been a vital part of this Board and done a great job for us, and I would like to keep him in that position.
I'll second, you have a second, in discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Okay, we have a number of announcements, but I'd like to have Commissioner Cupid make the announcement about one of our more heavily-involved citizens in Cobb County, about the Keep Cobb Beautiful. And she's not here, really? Wow, sorry to hear that. But anyway, I'm pleased to see her name on this list.
Okay. On behalf of our chairman and District Four, I'm happy to announce the appointment of Monica Delancey to Keep Cobb Beautiful. She's been quite active in the District Four area with getting residents out there to volunteer and cleaning up the roadways, and just has been pretty active in the area overall. So, with that, I'm pleased to make this announcement.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll let Commissioner Weatherford make the next announcement. To the Animal Control Board.
I'd like to announce the appointment of Dr. Justin Toth to the Animal Control Board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Scherrath, I believe you have the next trouble.
I'd like to announce the reappointment of Ryan Newsom to the Airport Advisory Board, also the reappointment of Joseph Cavallis to Neighborhood Safety Commission, along with Trish Steiner to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, the reappointment of John Jordan, who is an author, by the way, to the Public... who is an author, by the way, to the Public Library Board of Trustees, and also to announce the reappointment of Jill Flam to the Recreation Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
I would like to announce the reappointment of Chip Kozinski to the Airport Advisory Board, and also announce the reappointment of Judy Williams to the Board of Zoning Appeals and to the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you.
They have all done a great job and appreciate their service.
And with that, I believe we're going to go into the hearing now. Is that correct? Or do you want to do the announcements first and then do the hearing? Then take a break? Let's do the announcements and then do the hearing? You want to do that? Right, okay. So let's go into Commissioner Comments, and then we're going to take a break, and then we have a community development hearing. So with that, I'll start with Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First one I have is, I request that Community Development and the County Attorney's Office to work on a special code amendment process on the two meetings in January to allow Sunday sales until 2:00 a.m. on Super Bowl Sunday in the areas authorized by state law. Additionally, I've also asked that Community Development come back with a normal code amendment process to look at the other entertainment areas as described under state law, to, to look at Sunday sales. That's the first thing. Okay, to get into the holiday spirit, want to share with you some Santa sightings. First one is on Fridays, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., carriage rides and Santa visits at the avenues of East Cobb. At the Battery, there are free photos with Santa at the On and Up Experience presented by SunTrust. Go to batteryatlanta.com for the hours. Also, on December 16th, which is this Saturday, from 5:30 to 7:30, it's a special night. Santa will be there with Santa Paws Night for four-legged family members. So Commissioner Burl, you can bring your, your other kids. Also, there is for families with special needs on December 16th, this Sunday from 10:00 a.m. till noon. Reservations for that will be on the web page. And another one specifically for Commissioner Burl, Santa Paws, this Saturday from 5:30 to 7:30. That's also at the Battery. And finally, celebrate the season with the Holiday Light Show at the Battery from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. nightly. And it goes on at 6, 7, 8, and 9. And that's all I have.
Commissioner? Commissioner Burl?
Okay. I would like to first recognize and thank the 116th Army Band from the Georgia National Guard for a great concert Sunday night. The chairman and Judy were there as well as me and my husband. And this was not a well-publicized event, but it will be next year. So they, that was a great concert and really got us in the Christmas spirit. And I'd also like to thank the Northeast Cobb Business Association and Kennesaw Business Association for their sponsorship of Precinct One, Police Precinct One's Christmas event last week at the Governor's Gun Club. It was a great event, and without their sponsorship of the, of several businesses within the two organizations, the police and their spouses would not have been covered for dinner. So thank you to NCBA and KBA for that. Next, I'd like to congratulate our Keep Cobb Beautiful Board and volunteers. Oh, man, they racked up at the Keep Georgia Beautiful Awards Luncheon last week in Macon. We won the State Award for Litter Prevention. The South Cobb Lions Club got that award. And the State Award for Community Improvement, State Award for Waste Reduction and Recycling, the Affiliate Innovation Award, Affiliate of the Year Award went to Keep Cobb Beautiful. The Law Enforcement Official of the Year Award, Officer Natalie Jegg from Precinct Four, Public Works Employee of the Year Award went to Dr. Jonathan Jenkins, our own Solid Waste Division. And Executive Director of the Year Award, which was a surprise, was our own Director Kimberly White. And last but not least of the awards was our own Commissioner Lisa Cupid got the Elected Official of the Year Award. So congratulations to all. And at our December 17th meeting, Commissioner Weatherford and I will be recognizing, and the whole board, recognizing Keep Cobb Beautiful, the board and the volunteers for this, all these awards that they acquired last week. So congratulations. This is the most since I've been involved that we've ever taken home in one year.
Amazing.
It's great. Okay, now for another fun part. We're up to 72 adoptions for our veterans from the animal shelter. This is Ms. Ledesma, who currently serves in the U.S. Marine Corps. She adopted this three-month-old border collie named Jasper through the program Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets. Thank you for your service and congratulations on finding your new forever best friend. This is our number 72, thanks to the leadership team at Cobb Animal Services and the generosity of Superior Plumbing. If you are or know of a veteran who would like a forever best friend, we have forms to fill out in the back. Go to the shelter and pick out your new best friend. Thank you and Merry Christmas. So also, on Sunday, we attended the Empty Bowl Brunch at the Arts Center, Mountain View Arts Center. It's an annual event that, it's a great annual event. And if you've never been, I encourage you to get a ticket and go next year. And also, the Artistic Attic, which is a great place to buy Christmas gifts, is open also now through next Monday, December 17. So, and Animal Services is also having a coat drive now through December 21st. Donate new used coats, jackets, hats, or gloves to Cobb County Animal Services to have the adoption fee waived when you take home your new forever friend. So if you're not a veteran and you still want to adopt free, you can take coat or, for the coat drive. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Chairman. Wanted to mention that the Chairman and Commissioner Burl and I attended Mandate 44 Graduation this past week, and it was a great event, and some more fine officers hit the streets for Cobb. It was an honor to be there. And then we went to the Precinct One Christmas Party at Governor's Gun Club, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Burl for her efforts. And she thanked the supporters, but she was the one that put the hammer on them to get it, get them to pay.
Don't say that.
She did a lot, she did. She did a lot of, she, she asked firmly and got the money. And without her, it would not have been a successful event. So thank you for that. And one thing coming up, this Saturday, the 15th, 11:30 hours, the wreaths across America will take place here in Marietta at the Marietta National Cemetery. I'll be honored to be there to represent the Patriot Guard Riders and the American Legion Riders, and we'll be escorting the wreaths in early that morning to not only Marietta, but to the Canton, Georgia National Cemetery. I'm pleased to announce, for the first time in the many, many years that I have been at this event, at least according to what we can tell, all graves in both cemeteries have been covered and sponsored.
That's great.
And I, we've never had that in Marietta, and very rarely in Canton, because unfortunately, it's getting filled up there. But we're talking tens of thousands of wreaths at $15 each. So if you're not doing things Saturday, you need to come and look at the cemetery in either Georgia National in Canton or Marietta just down the street. It's a very moving ceremony. And at the conclusion of the ceremony, where we would have period soldiers and military displays, we will all be putting wreaths on every grave there, some dating to the Revolutionary War. So it's a pretty amazing cemetery. And with that, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you. This Friday, we're, are going to have our first annual Cobb County Appreciation Awards conducted by Operation Snatch Back, and that will be held at South Cobb High School off of Clay Road, and this is open to the public. I encourage people to check out the newsletter to register and attend. I'm excited to share that I will be hosting a resolution run for avid runners who are unafraid to get out in the cold. And this will be held on Saturday, January 5th, kicking off the epicenter's fifth year anniversary, which is off of Riverside Parkway, formerly Six Flags Drive. And again, if you check out the newsletter, you'll see a link to register. Finally, I'm glad to announce that Powder Springs will have the first Community Emergency Response Team training of January 2019. And the training will be held on Saturdays of January 12th, 19th, and 26th. If you're available, I encourage people to get online and register for that training event, as you never know when an emergency may arise, particularly with weather being as cold as it is. To register, again, you can go online to the newsletter or reach out to the city of Powder Springs. Those are all my announcements, Chairman.
Thank you. Just a couple for me, continuing to, to list a number of kudos of the people in the county here doing incredible things. Amy Chandler has been named the U.S. Tennis Association for Georgia Tennis Professional of the Year, and she's the facility manager at the Lost Mount Tennis Center. And those of you who watched my video last week saw an amazing display by someone with a Rubik's Cube. This guy can put together a Rubik's Cube blindfolded. That is crazy.
Maybe you should have him work on the budget.
I will take that under advisement. But these are just kind of people we have in the county. And as you go and you talk to them, you're just amazed by what they do and their passion and their talents. And they bring a lot of, you know, aspects of this kind we hadn't thought about. So I just, that was just a lot of fun watching this young man, Raymond Goslow. And finally, the kudos to the election office. I'll never forget, I, I went by the elections office about two days after the general election in November, just to thank the team. And I'll never forget, as I walked in there, all I saw, everywhere I went were bins of paper documents that have to be filled out when you go in to register to vote. Every one of those paper documents has to be filed and alphabetized and kept for two years. And, you know, there's just not enough good things you can say about the ladies that were back, because they're all, they're all ladies. But the patience and dedication they have, which is why we just didn't have issues in Cobb County. Remember, we had 141 precincts that opened up on time in Cobb County on General Election Day, 141. And all the work that goes in there, bringing the machines there, getting them programmed, getting the people at the desk to register, the computers synced, all the little things that if one thing goes wrong, then the whole train stops. My hat's off to Janine Evelyn and her team. They're magnificent. The budget this year, plus up five of them, gave them five additional positions. But the reality is, they could probably use a lot more. But like everybody else in Cobb County, they do more with less. And we would not, we'd be remiss in not acknowledging all the great things that Janine has done down there to make sure that one of the privileges of this country are voting as held sacrosanct, and that the voting decision is done with integrity. And finally, I want to thank the board for the retreat yesterday. You know, it's, it's not easy leading this great county. We have a lot of people and a lot of interests. But I think because of the way we do things, and you saw the exchange went back and forth yesterday, but they make us better because we can be open about that and disagree or agree. And we finally arrive at something what I call the middle ground that we can move forward on. And every, every event that we have done with the board, with the budget process, which is brand new, which has added all kinds of extra hours to the board members here, and I just have to laugh when people say this is a part-time job. Ridiculous. It's a full-time job that they get part-time pay for. But my hat is off to this board. They have stuck right in there. They have done their, their duties above and beyond, come to every event, and we have what we have today because of their commitment to this. So I just want to say thank you to the board members. You make me a better chairman by, by your challenges, your efforts to get things in that I, that I can't get in, but I want to try to get in. But I think that's why, this is a great county, because we have great commissioners here. And my hat's off to all four of them here. They've, they've gone, they've done a great job. And I would, I would, I really want to say thank you in public to that. So with that, before during the meeting, I want to have Dana come up. Is Dana here? We were going to have a hearing here, but some events have transpired that I believe we don't have to have that hearing now. I want Dana to, to address that along with the lawyer from the, from the board.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I'm actually going to hand this over to Sam Hensley, who is our legal counsel for alcohol hearing cases. And thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Adam County Attorney. Pardon me, I am Sam Hensley, representing the Business License Division. We do have a hearing scheduled today in the matter of an appeal of an alcohol work permit application denial for Mr. Christopher Shivala. Mr. Shivala was administratively denied due to a violation of Cobb Alcohol Code 6-206, specifically two DUI convictions in the five years immediately preceding his application for this work permit. It's actually a renewal application. Both of those convictions occurred in this year of 2018. He did receive notice of this hearing. In fact, there was a license review board hearing on this matter on October the 18th, at which time the license review board voted to deny the application. So, Mr. Chairman, I stand in my place to inform the board of these facts. Mr. Shivala is not in attendance at the hearing today. As Alicia Webb of the Business License Division did contact him by phone during the course of this meeting, Mr. Shivala indicated that he did not plan to be here and that he understood that his absence from this meeting would probably result in a denial of his application. He said he understood that and accepted that and realized that he would have to wait a year to apply again for an alcohol permit in Cobb County. I do have my witnesses here to testify to this on the record, if it is the pleasure of the board and the county attorney. In either event, I will be asking the board to vote to deny the application at this time due to the fact that there was proper notice of the hearing, and we did have communication with the applicant in regard to his absence today. So it was not the result of him not being able to get here or any other extenuating circumstance.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to do that.
You have a second? Second? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we finish, Commissioner, I'd like to have one other additional member come up to the podium here.
Ms. Richardson, would you like to come up to the podium a minute?
Yes.
For those of you who don't know Sandra Richardson, she has served in many capacities in Cobb County government. Most recently, her position as Business License Manager, formerly the Community Development Director's Assistant. She served in the Clerk's Office, and I'm not sure where, where all you've been.
County Attorney's Office.
The County Attorney's Office. See, she's been everywhere. And she's done a great job in, in all of those divisions. So she is going to be retiring at the end of this year, and we would just like to say thank you for your service for so many years. Thank you for your positive attitude and working with others and all the many lives that you've touched and your commitment and dedication to this county and, and the many capacities that you've served. So thank you. Enjoy your retirement, and I'm sure that others would like to say it. So thank you, enjoy your retirement, and I'm sure that others would like to say a few words.
Sandra, it's been a great ride. Enjoyed. I've actually worked with you in many of those different positions, and sorry to see you go. Don't be a stranger, but enjoy your retirement.
I had no idea what you did when I came here. You know, but all I know is you did it really well. You're the epitome of professionalism, and I just want you to know that you go with our blessing and our many, many boundless thanks for your hard work and all you've done to make this a great county. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and truly enjoy your time. And I echo Commissioner out, don't be a stranger, you're always welcome back.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure working with you over these last four years, and don't be a stranger, but hopefully we won't have too many alcohol hearings licensed coming up. Just to tell you, Sam always brings them up anyway. But congratulations, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement. We really appreciate your service. From my observation, you have not had a stress-free role, but I wish you a stress-free venture beyond Cobb County.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Congratulations.
Rob?
I'd just like to thank Sandra for training me. It's the best training I've ever received. And I can assure you, she won't be a stranger because I've already got some ideas that I have not discussed with my trainer about some advisory commissions and boards that I'm going to be approaching Ms. Richardson about.
Thank you. Your comment, you have the floor.
I would thank you, first of all, for the recognition and the kind words. I'm a Cobb County native. I was born at Kennesaw Hospital. This county is very important to me, and I started my career in the legal field and was there for approximately 25 years before coming to the county. It started with Ms. Dance, when Dottie Bishop was the county attorney, and was given the opportunity to start there and served there for about a year and a half before I went to the Clerk's Office. I was there for approximately six years and then went to community development. I've been afforded a lot of opportunity through this county, opportunity that I never thought would come my way. And I just can't help but thank the many people through the years that have trained me and helped me to grow and helped me to understand. And for these opportunities, I thank each one of you. Thank you for not only being my mentors, but being my friends, and I leave thanking each one of you for that friendship.
Thank you. Best of luck. On my positive note, we're adjourned.